Meeting to order, rising for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sue, your roll call, please.
Councilmember Groves?
Here.
Councilmember Chambers?
Here.
Councilmember Salzweedle?
Here.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
And Mayor DeBoer.
Here. Motion for the consent agenda tonight?
I'll make that motion.
I'll support. Discussion or changes? Sue.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedle?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Here.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Citizen discussion, items on the agenda.
I do have two letters to read.
Okay, go ahead.
City council, in regarding the property at 990 North Washington Street, should become part of the Boy Scout Park. Put some picnic tables and swings for the little ones to use, even for adults like to use the swings. Let's hope the splash pad will be busy once it is open. Also, why the reports of the police and fire department are no longer in the ledger. It would be nice if people stayed in the green while driving Lowell. How about a grocery store instead of more weed shops in Lowell? Sincerely, Joanne Miller, Lowell residents. Dear council, I don't think that the ledger is a place to get into a letter of war, and my schedule does not allow me to get to your meetings, so this is the best way that I can share my memory of the Scout property and the misinformation that was expressed at the last meeting. At that time, I was on the city council and served on the Parks Commission. When Sharon Ellison was elected, it was not so much the issue with the property on North Washington, but more so as a result of the sale of Lowell Cable TV. Ms. Ellison's campaign had several endorsements from the Gens Township and was funded by advertisements paid for from residents outside of the city. I would ask that you remember that Peggy Cooper does not live in the city and does not pay city taxes. Vergens has 0.8672 local mileage compared to our 15.7 mil rate. It has long been an issue with me that the township residents feel entitled to use the city assets without any of the financial support. While on the council, we require the sports teams to pay $5 per participant per sport season to help offset the cost of maintaining the parks. At the time, over 75% of participants in the YMCA program, youth football, et cetera, were from outside the city, yet we carried the burden of maintaining the parks. The only thing I would advise on what to do, what you should do with the Washington Street property, once annexed, is if you're going to add it to the park system, please plan on increasing the park's budget to accommodate improvements. We have so much parkland and no funds to maintain them, and soon the Rec Park property will be vacated by the Kent County Youth Fair, and that will require more money to improve, maintain, and operate. Along with that, there is the Park by the Division Street Bridge, Stony Lakeside, which looks like a scene from The Battle of the Bulge. We need to stop adding more nice-to-have things and worry more about maintaining what we have and the need-to-have things. If the residents of Vergent Township want the property to be part of the park system, have them buy it and donate it or lease it to the management company and turn it into an RV facility for visiting campers. Thank you, Jim Fowler, 810 Boz Road.
Thank you. All right, let's go to full business number A, Paul.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. My name is Peter Heffner, and I represent Birdabout Heffner, the firm of certified publisher, captain, and conduct the audit for the city for the year ended June 30, 2022. I was going to touch upon our opinion and then walk through some slides which present the financial statements at the front of the report. So we'll take a look at the governmental financial statements, and then the larger funds and how they were formed for the year being presented. I do want to point out that the financial statements are the responsibility of management and ultimately it is the board. It's our responsibility to express an opinion on those financial statements based on our audit. Our opinion is on page one, and it's what I would refer to as an unqualified opinion or a clean opinion. And the opinion is too big, it's longer, and I'm going to summarize that. The second paragraph identifies the fact that our firm audited the financial statements. The result of that audit is that the financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position, results of operations, cash flows that are applicable, the governmental activities, the business-type activities, each major fund, the DDA, and plus the aggregate remaining funds in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Very summarized, but that's the ideal opinion, the highest opinion you can receive. So that is great. Now, what we're going to do is we're going to take a look at some of the financial information that's presented within the audit. If you would go to the first, the next slide for me. This is a picture of your governmental activities. So what we've done is we've taken your governmental funds, general fund, major, local street funds, all the capital assets of the governmental activities, all the long-term liabilities of the governmental activities, and broken those into three components of net assets or net position. The top line in red is your investment in capital assets. I put a couple million dollars into capital assets. That bigger jump up was the showboat being produced, and then in the current year, you put in approximately $1 million worth of capital assets for facilities, for the showboat, streets, things of that nature. So you're putting more capital into place quicker than it's being depreciated, because that number is being forced down by depreciation. The blue line is the restricted component of your governmental activities net assets, and that's the restricted component, bounces up and down. Primarily, that's the major Lowell Street funding. So as you accumulate dollars and then you do a project, it bounces up and down. And the last line that we have is your unrestricted balance. You see approximately 2015, that balance went negative, and primarily that's the result of accounting standard that required you to put your pension liability on your books. The next slide that we're going to take a look at are the business-type activities, and these are the activities that are being performed and provided to citizens on a user-charge basis. So your water, sewer, and electric. And again, you can see here, put about a million and a half dollars into capital in the current year, which resulted in the unrestricted balance going down, and the restricted component being presented relates to revenue bonds and our outstanding with light power. So again, putting more assets into place for the customers of water, sewer, and electric utility. And that's the heart of the statement of net position, which is the first financial statement presented on the financial statements. Now, the next slide that we have is a picture of your governmental activities, but we're looking at just each of the individual funds. This is on a modified accrual basis of accounting, or dollars in, dollars out, not including the capital assets or the long-term liabilities of the city in these balances. And as you can see, continued strength in your major street, local street, and general fund, fund balance at the end of the year. The next slide that we have are your expenditures for your general fund, to just point out where the largest investment is in public safety. We have general government and the other components. I would just point out, when you purchase that new police car, it would show up as a component of the increase here, because those cars are capitalized and depreciated on governmental statements in the fund financial statements that purchased would show up as an expenditure. The next slide that we have is going to take a look at your sewer fund in the current year, approximately break-even position. So expenses were very consistent with revenues in the current year. The next slide that we have, this is your water operation. You can see for 2022, positive change in net position, as was with wastewater, but wastewater was very small. And the next slide that we have is the electric utility. You can see here, we also have a positive change in net position, additional expenses and additional revenues, primarily driven by cost of power, purchased power. And so what we've done is we've taken a look at your statement of net position, we've taken a look at your governmental, the largest governmental funds, changes in fund balance, and we've taken a look at your business-type activities and what occurred during the current year. Now, the audit itself is about 70 pages long, talks about capital assets, debt, various options that are selected under accounting standards when you are presenting information. But I tried to summarize it, briefly put that together for you, and I just wondered if there were any questions that I might be able to answer about the audit or the audit process. Overall, positive change in bond line pretty much across the board for the current year. Further questions? I can answer about the audit process?
No, I think we're good.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate the opportunity to work with you.
Thank you. All right, number B, police car purchase.
Even when Peter's still here.
Well, when I came to you last year, we didn't have any police cars. Now we got two police cars. We had an offer from, I'm assuming you guys all read the memo. Okay, I'm not going to read this back to you again. But this kind of gave you the backstory of this. We couldn't get the one from Ford, it was never built, and the only answer I got from Ford was the color was, it's a special color they like to paint police cars, and they run it at certain times of the year. Plus, it's a hybrid, so there's a special chip which they're short of. So we shopped around, we got a line on a used car from Western Michigan, which was 16,000 miles by now, for $51,000. We got word that Berger had some cars, a Tahoe, which would be a complete change, which was 57,000. But then Ford called last minute, said, hey, your car's in, when do you want to deliver? The car that we are getting would be, what I'm asking you to help us purchase is a 2023 Ford Interceptor, which we already have, be painted the same color, same stickers. We've already purchased and paid for it and have delivered all the parts for it, all the lights, electronics, and other barriers and things like that for it. The car will be, is in Lansing right now. We're asking that the city council allows us to purchase this car for $48,562, plus additional $390 to get a sticker. The colts and everything are right there. You have your packet. This will be pretty much the same cars that we just purchased last year, two years ago, the other hybrid. And I would strongly suggest we can keep buying hybrids, because we are getting, even city driving, we're getting about 20 miles to gallon with all the idling and driving, slow, slow, that's the street driving we do. I got half the department wanting the Tahoe, half the department wanting the Ford, so I'll deal with that. And hopefully, and I think in the future too, we will start, probably start changing the cars over to black, because it's a more common color, and it'll be easier to get. But we are asking to purchase the original car we could be ordered two years ago, or about a year and a half ago, except it'll be a 2023 for the $48,562, $390 to get a sticker for it. Do I can answer any questions for you?
You're positive they actually have one?
Yes. The guy called me, and I said, I don't have it, council meet for two weeks. He says, don't worry, we're not going to get rid of it, we'll hang out to it for you. So, yeah. And we will have it drop shipped to the Great Lakes Observatory that does all our putting together.
I make a motion to approve said purchase.
I'll support.
Any other discussion?
Can I drive it and give it?
Sure. Sue.
Councilmember Salzweedle?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
And Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Can delete that reallocation at home now, finally?
Yes.
Parking ordinance, Michael.
In front of you is ordinance 23-02, which restricts parking in municipal lots between 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM on, from in November through, November 1st through April 1st, with the exception of a permit issued by the chief of police. Also, will restrict parking on Main Street year-round from Hudson to Jefferson. We'll bring back the ordinance that we cleaned up at the last meeting and presenting to you for recommendation.
Any questions on that?
This takes the two-hour parking on Main Street out, right?
Correct.
Just makes it no?
No overnight parking.
Right, but shoppers can not have worry about getting out and getting to their car, right?
I'm not aware of anything where we needed two hour, we were eliminating the two-hour parking. I was under the impression we didn't want overnight parking.
No, we're eliminating the two-hour restriction with this ordinance.
I'm aware of that, that's... That was my understanding of the ordinance.
Yeah, when we had the initial discussion, that's what was brought up.
We can table this and bring it back.
Yeah, we can do that. So that was not part of our discussion, but that's an easy fix, if you'd like to do that. The other thing you could do is adopt it with that modification.
Right. Yeah, if we can adopt it and just modify it.
Let's do that then.
Yeah, is that something we all agreed on, that we would go away with the two-hour parking?
Yeah, I think it's basically, I mean, it's an enforcement nightmare unless you're out there during events, chalking tires.
Yeah. It violates your ports amendment, right?
It's a line, chalk tires?
So okay, so you could look at removing all those two-hour parking.
Yeah. So we'll just add that to the ordinance?
Okay, we can do that.
We can approve it with that modification.
Yeah, and everything else looks good, though?
Yes.
Motion for 23-02 with that modification?
I'll make that support.
Motion. All right. Any other discussion? Sue.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedle?
Yes.
Police cost recovery ordinance.
In front of you is ordinance 23-03. This was in, we discussed it, this is the last council meeting, we did make the modifications as requested. The cost recovery ordinance for fire remains intact and has no effect on that. And we've made the modification, the red line in the clean forty of the packet. I'm recommending ordinance number 23-03 is approved as presented.
Any questions on that?
Chief, your good.
Here.
Motion for 23-03?
I make that motion.
I'll support.
Discussion? Sue.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedle?
Yes.
And Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Number H, off-premises tasting room license.
Yep, in September 2022, the city council approved resolution 27-22 for Red Barn, Consignors, and Antiques to head off premises tasting room license. If you recall, Red Barn is partnering with Love Wines out of Luddington to provide the items for the tasting room. Upon submittal to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission, they were advised to switch the applicant from Red Barn, Consignors, and Antiques to Love Wines LLC. We revise resolution 03-23 at preference issue, and I'm recommending the city council approve. Resolution 03-23 is presented.
Yes, it's quite interesting. They tell you to fill it out one way, and you fill it out, and well, we want to do something different. And I had to write myself a lease agreement. Right. You want to back your shit in here still?
Yeah.
What a night, isn't it? All right, any questions for Mike?
Make a motion that, you have a question?
No.
Make a motion that we accept this.
I'll support.
Any other discussion? Sue.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedle?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers?
I will be abstaining. All right. Number G, transfer of Lowell Showboat. Months ago, the city council discussed the transfer of ownership of Lowell Showboat to Lowell Showboat Six, a Michigan now private organization. Attached is the agreement drafted and approved by Lowell Showboat Six regarding the transfer of ownership. City attorney can walk you through the agreement. And I reviewed it, and I believe it meets the hopes and objectives of the city council pertaining to this. I'm recommending Lowell City Council transfer ownership of Lowell Showboat to Lowell Showboat Six as presented.
Sure, okay. So that's a good summary, and I'm not going to read it cover to cover, but I'm just going to point out some important highlights, I think, that resulted from discussions back and forth between the city council and the board. Just some basics here. In consideration of $10, so that's all that they'll be paying for it, but in return, the consideration is that the organization is going to use it, be responsible for its operation, management, and maintain it for purposes consistent with those for which the showboat was constructed. So they're going to carry on showboat tradition and be responsible for it from here on out. The city will not have any liability or responsibility relative to the showboat after the effective date of this agreement. However, you are allowed to continue to reference the showboat and utilize its name and logo in the same manner as you have historically. So in other words, you don't have to stop doing that just because ownership is transferred. Let's see. The organization will indemnify the city and its officers, officials, employees, et cetera, for its use. And that's including the area, the fact that it's more to the seawall, and therefore, people will be using that area to enter and exit the showboat. So they're responsible to indemnify you for any events that occur there. I think what else is important. You do have the right of first refusal, so before they are allowed to demolish it or prior to any encumbrance, assignment, or transfer, they'll have to come to you and give you the right of first refusal, in case you ever want to reconsider ownership. But I think in my mind, those were kind of the hot-button issues that we worked through and the highlights. Any questions?
Yeah.
Speaking of liability, the lady that came and spoke to us that stepped into the water, we're getting a fence or some method to keep that from happening, right?
Yeah, the fence is in order right now. Just got supply chain issues and everything else.
I want to thank all the board members. I didn't know all of them were going to show up here tonight, but thank you very much for participating. I know we've had a lot of conversations over the last year and a half, and if any of you have anything you want to say about this document, feel free to say it. The other thing is that we thought, at least I personally thought it was nice to have it in the resale back. I don't know what the city council is going to look like in five or 10 years, or city management, what that looks like. Hopefully, we're good, but at least you have the opportunity that they could do something with it if someone needs it. Other than that, I want to thank the board for all the hard work they do.
All right, any other questions?
How about a motion for transfer of ownership? I'll make that motion to support.
No, I insist.
I'll support.
The other thing, I'll bring this to, we have a meeting next Tuesday at 2:00. We'll bring it up for our board, and ours to do that as well.
Excellent suggestion. All right, no further discussion. We'll vote. Sue?
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedle?
As president, too, can I vote on this? Or do I have to?
You should probably abstain.
Abstain, I'll abstain.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
New business fund balance.
After reviewing our audit for the prior fiscal year, I found we had $1.56 million in unassigned general fund balance. This is equivalent to 40% of general fund revenue. Our investment policy requires a minimum 15% of fund balance equivalent to general fund revenue. The city is in a fiscally sound financial position. For the past two years, we have made additional payments with excess fund balance to address local street improvements and made additional payments towards the unfunded pension liability. While we have intended to draw down the fund balance to approximately $1.1 million, we have yet to draw it down because our budgeted expenditures, along with these additional payments, have been less than collective revenue. As a result, we generated an additional $200,000 in fund balance this past fiscal year. I should also mention that a few years back, we set aside an additional $100,000 of fund balance to be used for wear road. When we approved the budget this year, we dedicated $100,000 for wear road as a proposed expenditure. However, the city didn't need to draw down the fund balance to do so. I would like to propose utilizing $200,000 from the fund balance and put towards the unfunded pension liability and an additional transfer to the local street fund. I would recommend making a $100,000 surplus pension payment to MERS and the remaining $100,000 to the local street fund. These expenditures will leave us approximately a 35% fund balance, which is still a sound financial position. My projection with this expenditure allows us to add Shepherd Drive to the road improvement list for the upcoming year. This is even with the conservatively budgeted marijuana excise tax funds. I recommend the Lowell City Council approve expenditures from the unassigned fund balance in the amount of $100,000 to the local street fund and $100,000 to the MERS surplus account for our unfunded pension liability.
Did anybody else get as happy reading this as I did?
Yeah.
So are we going to put $100,000 to MERS into that savings account that we have with them?
Yeah, we do that surplus account.
Yeah.
It'll go to the surplus account.
I've got to say, I'm very appreciative of the ways you're always trying to pour into that unfunded liability and pour into that street fund. So I'm grateful for the work that you do on those fronts. Any other questions for Mike? Motion to approve that expenditure.
I make a motion to approve those two expenditures.
And I'll support. Any other discussion? Sue.
Councilmember Salzweedle?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Lowell Little League in.
Evening, Mayor Council. The Lowell Little League has a use agreement for use of the baseball field at Creekside Park and Red Park. Their agreement expires at the end of March of this year, and they've asked for an extension of this agreement for another, they asked for one year, but it's like, oh, the agreement's up, let's do it for two years, like we did the last one. If you recall, back in 2021, the city worked with Lowell Little League to come up with this new agreement, where the Little League basically schedules the fields, because they use them so much, and the few teams that want to use them work with Lowell Little League to get the scheduling done. We reviewed the draft agreement with Parks Recreation Commission at this January meeting of this year. The agreement language was not changed except for the dates of the agreement. So the fees would stay at $8 per day per field with a yearly charge, Lowell Little League, of $5,200. And then if other teams come along and want, and can utilize a field that Little League doesn't need, they can pay Little League the $8 a day and make recovery costs. Talked with Mike Minier and Tim Van Laan at Lowell Little League, and their emails are attached, and they really agree.
All right, any questions for Dan?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract for 2023 to 2025.
I'll support.
Any other discussion? Sue.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Oh, yeah.
Councilmember Salzweedle?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Sam. Here we go, Michael, Boz Road Tree Removals.
We had an issue occur recently whereby I need to, I believe we need to revisit our tree removal ordinances in the role of the Arbor Board. We also need to discuss how to address the situation we have on Boz Road. It was brought to my attention in the fall that the Arbor Board met to approve the removal of 25 trees on Boz Road from the east entrance to Stony Lakeside Park to the water treatment plant. The concern was the trees which were planted after the Boz Road incident from over 10 years ago were growing into the power lines underneath them. There was a question as to why trees which would grow into power lines would be allowed to be planted. Lowell Power identified that the trees along Boz Road are creating a threat to their reliability with the electric system. The trees planted along Boz Road do not comply with Utility Best Practice Guidelines, which only allow for trees that... which will only allow for trees that mature to less than twenty feet to be planted directly under utility lines. Since the trees were not planted utilizing utility best practices, Lowell Light Power does not feel it is sustainable to continue to prune these trees for their lifespan. The trees mature to between forty to seventy feet and will continue to present a threat to reliability, so they pursued removing the trees. The DPW Director and I agree with this assessment, and the Arbor Board approved their removal. I was informed that the board didn't have a plan for replacement, and this was brought to my attention from my staff. Section twenty-three ninety-seven gives wide latitude to the City Manager and a public or private utility to remove trees or clear trees as needed to address a public safety concern. It also requires the party responsible to replace a tree or pay a fee to a designated tree fund if they cannot replace the tree. In early January, I was notified that Lowell Light Power was going to clear the trees a date prior to doing so. This is when I was reminded of the issue of no replacing again. And then we can't have any conversation with Charlie West regarding this. My concern is that there is a sensitivity to Bowes Road from the past issue, that if there is no plan to address this going forward, we are going to have a major problem. Light Power has a legitimate concern as well. They are concerned with trees growing into the power lines, and they need to maintain this in an efficient manner. Their concern is maintaining these trees every few years. They also have concerns since the city planted these trees after the incident a few years back. The trees planted should not have been planted as they grew into the power lines. In addition, there is concern about the Lowell Light Power rate pair replacing trees. The city should have, oops, didn't mean that. It's never planted at this location. That's left. That being, that being said, we held off on removal for the time being to work through this better. Also, prior to this day, I was under the impression that the Arbor Board had the authority to remove trees. When I first became City Manager, I was specifically told that you had to go to the Arbor Board to approve a removal of a tree on public property or the public right of way, and they were the authority on this. I never had an issue to contest this during my ten years, so it's never been an issue of concern for me. Once I began reviewing the ordinances pertaining to tree removal, I never saw that the Arbor Board had this authority. In fact, the city, the authority is given to the City Manager regarding tree removal. The Arbor Board's authority consists of developing and maintaining an annual comprehensive tree plan. Tree removals should be put into the plan and addressed by the Arbor Board, however my interpretation is, when situations occur that are not in the annual tree plan, the matter is deferred to the City Manager and/or the utility the trees are causing issue with. I also had a conversation with Mark Anderson. It was originally brought to my attention that the trees were planted, were done so by his former city employee with no guidance. Mark informed me that he was involved in planting of the trees, and they were done in conjunction with the Arbor Board. He also had a certified arborist involved. I explained to him the problem, and he reached out to the arborist to see if the trees should be removed. I attached a report from the arborist, who didn't believe the trees needed to be removed but could be pruned. I presented this to Charlie West, and while they respect the opinion of the arborist, Lowell Light Power is still in favor of replacing the trees in a manner that reflects their current practices. In addition, ordinance twenty-three dash ninety-seven states that as part of the removal, a fee is established from time to time by regular resolution of the City Councils shall be paid by the party responsible for the removal and deposited in a designated tree fund to pay for the replacement unless otherwise provided by resolution to the City Council. I cannot find any record the City Council has ever done this. We have no idea what this amount, how much this amount is. That says, General Manager and I have found a solution to move forward on. We believe the best solution is to have Lowell Light Power trim these trees one time to get us through the year. We will then seek the assistance through the Lowell Area Community Fund to replace the trees with trees, shrubs, and/or bushes that would align with the utility planning guidelines. We also intend to engage the Arbor Board and include this into the comprehensive tree plan. We don't believe it's approved to use of tax dollars to spend a few thousand dollars annually trimming, trimming these trees. LMP just didn't plant these trees underneath the power line, and they don't, and doesn't believe they should have to assume this expense. I agree with his position, but I don't think it's wise to have, have to trim trees every two years and spend a few thousand dollars each time. We can have a landscape architect assist us and provide more vegetation suitable to this situation. In addition, I think it may be appropriate to clarify the role and/or need of the Arbor Board and the authority delegated to the City Manager regarding tree approval, removal. The ordinances give the City Manager wide authority in removing and replacing trees on public property or the public right of way. However, it doesn't appear the city is operated this way. To paraphrase, the role of the Arbor Board is to develop an annual tree plan. I would agree that the city should try to follow the suggestions of the board that we're placing the plan the best we can, however, there are situations that occur that were not in the plan, and I don't see anything in the ordinance requiring me to seek Arbor Board approval to remove trees that are not in the plan. So I also just added some ordinances that were pertaining to this issue. Charlie and I spent a lot of time trying to work through this issue. We recognize the issues in the past on Bowes Road, and we don't want to do that again, but the trees are an issue, and we need to address it. So we think we've come up with a viable solution to address it. That being said, um, it seems to me that there's, there's a need to clarify the role, the roles of the, of the Arbor Board and the, and the, and the tree removal ordinance, but, you know, I'm, if, if, if you want to give all the authority to the, uh, if you want to give more authority to the Arbor Board, that's, that's well within your purview as well, but I just think it's something we probably need to look at.
How high are the power lines, Charlie?
Approximately, it's, um...
Thirty-five or forty-five feet in the air, but the neutral is lower than that. We need to maintain below the neutral, so if we need to work on the power lines, we've got plenty of cars.
Yeah.
So, so the lines start thirty-ish, maybe thirty-five, and then go from there.
And that's the main line coming down Bowes Road, right?
Yes, um, there are three circuits that come down Bowes Road, and majority of actual city limits are fed from those lines. So from a liability standpoint, it's definitely a critical line.
Is there a need to have an Arbor Board? I mean, if the ordinance allows for your discretion, and it's just generating a tree plan, would that be more prudent with maybe Dan or with Parks? But most having a whole separate board?
That's really the purview of the City Council. That being said, that's really your, that's really your position to, to decide on that. But there is no requirement by law that we have to have an Arbor Board. I know, um, even like for Tree City USA, in my former community, we didn't have an Arbor Board, but we were a Tree City USA. So I don't know if that's, um, it's going to be an issue. I don't, I don't see that being an issue.
I'm not trying to beat anybody up, but who made the decision to put a tree that grows forty to seventy feet under power lines? Was that an Arbor Board decision or?
I mean, or just...
From what I was told, the Arbor, from what I was told, I was given two different answers. At first, I was told it was an employee, then I was told it was the Arbor Board. My guess is, and I did read some minutes in the past, if the Arbor Board did look at this issue, so I, I, I don't, I, my guess is probably the Arbor.
Because I get all the Tree City packets, it's more of like a, almost like a renewal.
Yeah.
And I'm not on the Arbor Board. They just have always come to me, and I think it's, we just send a fifty dollar check or something like that, and then we, you know, or Tree City USA or...
Yeah, you can even, I mean, there's, there's different, I mean, like you start...
And it just gives you basically a discount on replacement and stuff.
Right, plus like if you want to buy, you know, one of the things they offer is you can buy tree saplings.
Yeah.
Do things of that nature, and there's different things with Tree City.
Well, one thing I'd like to, to make clear is when we decide to plant new trees, let's say we're, we're going to do the DDA section, the downtown, and everybody doesn't like the flowering tree, they don't like the budding tree, they don't like this tree. So again, you're going to get fifty different people coming down, I, I don't like that tree. So some things that the Arbor Board can do is, is kind of put that out there as, as you get that information. I just don't know how that's going to look for, but Dan's only got till October, but after that, August, sorry. So again, there, there could be some issues when, when you're picking the tree for, for the community. I, I don't know.
I think, so in our former community, what we did was we actually had a landscape architect give us a tree plan as to what trees would work that would be durable for the environment and meet the needs of the utility. I would, I would say that's the simplest solutions to...
But ultimately, it should come to you and Dan, or whoever.
Right.
Dan's only here for seven or eight more years, but it should come to you and Dan and Charlie, right? Also, I think it's increasingly difficult, given the time of day that they chose to meet to have any city involvement whatsoever. I think seven AM is a difficult time to have a meeting.
Well, I think Arbor Boards are good, for lack of a better term, springboard, right? They can bring recommendations and...
Or a screen.
Right. You know, um, eliminating it, mm, I don't know about that.
Doesn't really cost us something. Maybe.
Yeah.
Eric.
So Perry Beecham resides at nine twenty-four Riverside Drive, Chairman of Lowell Light Power, and also on the Arbor Board. Uh, the Arbor Board, my understanding, again, I haven't been on it since the inception, but, um, was created, um, because of some of the work that Lowell Light Power was doing and removing the trees. And, uh, we had citizens uproar, and, um, if you can remember, not to bring up sore subjects, but, you know, a couple of employees put smiley faces on trees that were being cut down and everything. So the, we didn't, there was not an Arbor Board before that, and the Arbor Board was created to try to give some guidance on what the citizens wanted in the, in the community. So just, you know, so just wanted to have a little backdrop of where that came, why it started and where it came from.
Thanks, Eric. What about absorbing it maybe into the scope of parks, right? They do a master plan and a tree plan, and the DPW Director's involved with parks.
Yeah, that's a privilege of the City Council, they like to do that.
I think the trees are important, and I, but I think solving a problem to create another park in Charlie is a roundabout way of doing it.
I wouldn't have a problem if parks got involved with it or absorbed it or, you know.
Eric, do you have any insight, because I honestly don't remember, on why it got moved to seven AM?
Um, because we're, it was, uh, Mondays at, um, noon, and we're having, uh, problems getting a horn at noon, um, so that's when we said, let's look at, um, changing it to seven o'clock in the morning. We didn't really want to go to an evening, because, I mean, you've got City Hall, you know, you've got City Council, you got, there's a lot of evening meetings, Planning Commission, uh, Lowell Light Power, um, Lowell Area Trailways, so there's, so we just, um, again, moved it, um, to, to try it, to see how it would work, um, to seven o'clock in the morning. Dan's typically here, um, Ryan T. Twork, which is not, uh, um, a Arbor Board member, but attends, um, for Light and Power, um, and he's, you know, so it was just, you know, let's, let's try it. It worked. Again, my, being self-employed, and it's, a lot of times it's hard to get back at noon if you're working in Grand Rapids or someplace else, so it was, we just tried, was trying it to see how it would work. So that's kind of why we changed it to, um, the morning.
Yeah, I just didn't remember.
It had Dr. Reagan, it did kind of hit my schedule a little bit more than trying to leave work, and now that I'm retired, I, I can do it anytime, but again, at that time, it was easier for me to not have to leave work.
And Dr. Reagan, Dr. Reagan is the chairman, um, on the Arbor Board, and again, I know he's working towards retirement, um, sold his business, but still is working several days. So that's kind of, kind of where we went. The other I, I also want to bring up, because when we're talking about trees, um, I just, I want, not just Light and Power, but I want everybody, um, to be informed and working on the, on the same page, um, because with the trails, and the trails that are going to be going in, um, down south of Bowes Road and everything, there's going to, you know, there's going to be a lot of trees, a lot of them are dead, but there's going to be a lot of trees that are going to be, need to be removed in that process, and again, back to whether, whether there's going to be a, you know, a fee for every tree that's going to be removed for the trails. You know, and I, again, I know that the city has, in conjunction, recently, they've asked Light and Power to help on some removal of trees, so, I mean, the, it's not just Light and Power, it's the city, it's consumers, it's the trails, so for what it's worth.
Eric.
As someone with many years on the parks, what do you think of the idea of blending parks and the Arbor Board together? Do you have an opinion either way?
You know, I just think it, whatever you decide to do, I just think it needs to get, to be well-informed to the public, um, what, what's going on, what's going on in the, in the community with trees and, and whether it's the parks, you know, I think that can certainly, because again, so where a lot of trees are being, needs to be removed for Light and Power, it's underneath the power lines and everything, so ideally, yeah, we can put twenty-foot trees, different things, but again, I think it'd be, the idea of the Arbor Board is, okay, we're going to remove a tree in the city, and on city property, we want to replace it with a tree. And in all likelihood, the best place to replace most of those trees are in the parks.
Kind of like the compensation cut for, uh...
Yeah.
We're taking this one here, but we'll put another one in the River Walk Park.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
I just think the, we hear more from over the year about the parks and what's going on, right? We're more informed with them than the operation of the Arbor Board. I know Jim sits on that board.
And we probably meet four, maybe six times a year. I mean, it's not like we, we...
At one time, it was every, once a month, every day. And, and over the years, we've kind of said, is, there really wasn't a need, we felt that there wasn't a need to meet once every month.
Yeah, plus, plus there's a, a fee that goes into the Arbor, or if we, you know, the balance we keep, and that could easily go into the...